Oh yeah, I think they're gonna stay there.
Hey, I have a present for you.
Just so you all know, our mics are on now because the picture's up.
What are you on?
This?
Dude.
We have one of those videos on the CNN.
No.
Stupid things people said.
Yeah, laptops are just a better, better tool.
Am I the only one who uses the town left?
Yes.
I guess I'm the only one who doesn't have my own.
Well, those are getting ready for upgrades anyway, so I might just get one or two of them as like backups to be with, you know.
Don't have their own.
They don't have their own.
You can have mine back.
Steve started the pile, so.
I stole my wife's laptop.
This is going the way of the electric car. Get it? No one wants to use it, so.
Yeah, we'll put all the tablets in the electric car and sell them. Oh, I bet it does. Nobody's ever seen it move though.
Okay, now that there are four of us here, I'm gonna bring us to order.
Yeah, is that you?
Ladies, gentlemen, ready? It's okay. Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Reedfield Select Board. It is February 26th, it is 6:31, and I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The plan is to go through the agenda as posted, but when we get done with communications, I'd like to make a suggestion that we take the two items that have employee input on them out of order so that we don't have to keep them here and paying them to sit and listen to us, if that's all right.
You pay people to sit and listen to us?
If they're employed, we do.
Not everyone, okay, good.
Wow, that'd be a pretty good trick, right? Get an audience.
Juicing up the attendance.
Ah, yes, okay. Regular meeting items, the first one is the minutes, 24-099. I believe they were not included in the packet, or were? They were included as an extra. So there's one thing we have to take care of. Last time when we did the warrants, I went ahead and had us take a vote, and we actually hadn't had a motion or a second. So Angelica caught that when she was listening to the tape to do the minutes, so before we can, I think it would be prudent if we made the motion and seconded it and revoked it, and then put it in the minutes and have her approve them, if that's all right with everybody?
It is awesome that Angelica caught you this time, or us.
Us.
You know, usually it's like, hey, you let this out. It's only fair.
I'll shoulder it, it's okay.
If you tell us what warrant, we'll make a motion.
It's 33 to 36.
And the amount of?
I'm trying to pull up the minutes.
Oh, it's, the amount isn't in the minutes, it would be in the last agenda, which I can get to or someone else can, let's see.
Worth.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants. We didn't do any of them? I thought we did.
And then Bobby, the motion in a second?
33 and 34?
Yeah, and then what's the next set?
There's only 33 and 34 listed in the packet.
Okay, because in the minutes you have 33 to 36, Angelica.
So maybe that we only did 33 and 34, is that part of the problem? Well, I think 35 and 36 were the ones you did the day of, just like you have 37 and 38 today. So that's why they weren't in the packet. Right.
Okay, I thought we did those the next time.
But you've been doing them the same night.
All right, so then 35 and 36 haven't been in any minutes then. And that's not what's here, right? This is 37 and 8. So Eric, if you can fetch 35 and 36 sometime during the meeting, we'll do them whenever they come upstairs. So 33 and 34, Dave, or Sean made the motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve warrants 33 and 34 for $432,561 and six seconds.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Carol, just to let you know, when we did our minutes last time, when Angelica did the minutes from the tape for our last meeting, she found that we voted on the warrants, but we had not had a motion or a second. So we're taking care of that right now.
Thank you, we had a guest that blew a fuse, so I'm like, no, didn't reply, thank you.
No further discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous, okay. So, does someone want to make a motion about the minutes that includes what we just did?
What? No.
I'll make a motion.
I think we should be doing 35 and 36 tonight for standard, because you had reviewed them or discussed them at the last meeting.
I had reviewed them, but we didn't discuss them.
But we didn't discuss them.
Right.
So I think we've somehow jumped ahead to warrants.
So, right, so he's gonna bring them up and we'll do them in tonight's warrant.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from February 12th with the addition of motion made by Sean and seconded by Dave in the amount of?
Oh, I closed that now. 490 something thousand.
Oh, I hope tonight's not gonna all go this way.
That is like, welcome back, Carter.
Does that mean I'm Mr. Cotter?
I'm so confused.
Sean's about to get us the amount. You have it?
Yeah.
Angelica has it, good, okay.
She just wanted to watch you look it up again.
So I've made the motion, is there a second?
Yes, second. Oh, wow.
Is there any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Yes.
Whoa, we made it through, it was unanimous, okay.
Okay.
Wow. We'll try not to make that mistake again. So in light of that, I'm going to suggest that we skip over item 24100 warrants until we have the others here. So when they come up, we'll do both sets of warrants, and I can discuss them for you. Okay, so we'll move on to communications, we have 25 minutes set aside for this Select Board communications, if there's any general information members of the board would like to state.
I have one. So one of my things is communication and improving communication, and I had asked about the vote tomorrow to help people understand that it is taking place to have it maybe put on the fire station sign, and that didn't happen. I know you had mentioned maybe getting another set of letters, is that possible? I know Lee's busy and I don't want him to have to do that stuff, but I would be having the tendency to do things at like 5:00 AM or 9:00 PM. So is that a possibility?
It is, yeah, I apologize, I didn't get that done. So, Carol, all right.
I would appreciate that, just for things the community needs to know like that. I did a great job of getting stuff out for the Church Road with the notices and stuff, but.
Anyone else?
Oh, I had another, sorry.
No, you said just one.
I know.
We're just gonna continue the flow of the meeting here.
Sorry, so, question, go into the truck. I know we talked about this and voted on this, I believe. So the other way that it could be handled, and we talked about, I don't remember the figures.
Can we do this under old business? This is more for announcement time. So remember that and we'll do it.
Sure, I can.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on to staff communications, Eric, you have a town manager's report?
Yeah, just a few brief updates, and one of them does relate to the town truck.
And did that get posted online, the town manager's report?
No, this is just a short verbal one, this is, this is not, this isn't a normal report.
Okay.
This is the second meeting.
Then I have to really listen.
Well, it'll be quick, it'll be quick. So we, we did get notice from Andersgård Bank today, which is where we'll be financing the town truck for 550, that we now own the backhoe, so we finished final payment on the backhoe, so that's done, that's out of the way. And so we are working now, I'm following the direction from the board, to secure a five-year lease for the full amount, for the, for the purchase price of that truck and the upfitting. And then we'll be, when we sell the truck, we'll do a principal payment, and we'll pay down that principal. So that can work, and so right now that, that's, that's in process to get that taken care of.
So the bank was fine with that?
Bank was fine with that.
And then that will reduce our interest?
Yeah, it'll reduce the amount of principal that we're accruing interest on, so yes, yeah.
Excellent.
So Carol, did you have something related to that?
I did, that's what I was gonna say, this sounds like the perfect time. So the other way it can be handled, is I don't remember the figures, but a $60,000 maybe purchase and a $40,000 something sale. The other way, that I understand, we used to do it in town, is buy it like we would do a bond, is we wanna do this, and we're gonna have a bond of this to bring it down to whatever missing amount of money, as I'm not being very clear, I'm sorry. But if we buy it and we sell it and go, you know, then it would be a capital expense, and then it should be on the ballot. And just buy it outright. We do a lot of leasing, it seems, and isn't, in the past, did we do as much leasing as we seem to these days? Because it seems like those kind of purchases are capital expenses and should maybe go out to the voters.
It is a lease purchase, it's not a lease, it's a lease purchase agreement.
Right, but I'm saying.
The only reason this one isn't going out to the voters is because we need it now.
Are you saying that just instead of borrow the money to just pay the difference in it? Is that we?
Yeah.
Instead of financing?
Right.
Well, some of that, didn't we have some money in there for the sander that we put towards that anyway?
We did, and we're also gonna be adding to that the plow package, so by the time you add that stuff together, it's about $18,000, I think. And so the, the pieces that are wear parts, the sander and the plow, we would be purchasing outright, the truck proper and the upfitting would be, would be the part we would lease.
When we?
Yeah, go ahead.
Don't cut me off, yeah, sorry. So i-if we did that with a five-year lease, and say you applied, whatever you get from the truck, say if it's 55, then you got 18 there, would we pay that off in just one payment essentially, because it would be one of the five-year payments? Or would you still spread the balance over five years?
We could do either, but I would expect that the, the most common approach would be to just drop it, spread it, oh, yeah, I mean, or spread it over the five years.
That would be my approach, just pay it off.
Yeah, yeah, no, but, but no, I mean, so things like purchasing trucks, that's not really something that we would bring to town meeting most of the time. Usually it's large capital expenditures, and the voters actually already approved the money for some of this, a portion of it. The voters also will give the Select Board authority to sell town property and to apply the funds however they, they need to, so. No, I'd say it's pretty uncommon to, in this town or any other really, to have something as small as a town truck go out to vote. It's an operating expense more than anything.
No, I'm not saying it because we want the town to vote, but it's a capital expense where if we just say, okay, we need $20,000 for a truck, instead of, I mean, I don't know what's more, saying we need $20,000 once for a truck or spreading $20,000 over five years seems, wouldn't that be more expensive?
Well, it's probably gonna be closer to 40 or 60, I have to look back at what all that stuff was, but I, so we probably shouldn't be having too much of a discussion without the actual numbers, but I, I hear what you guys are saying about trying to borrow as little as possible, or when we do borrow, to to, to use the funds to make a prompt payment and reduce the term of the borrowing. But I, I'm not sure that, I'll have to talk to the bank about whether we can do that, you know, pay it, move it from a five-year to a three-year. I think they'd be much more likely to say it's a five-year, or I guess the other alternative would be to make it a three-year and, and pay higher amounts over those periods, over that shorter term, so I can look at it a few different ways. But I think, I think I get the intent, which is to try to save as much money as possible.
But like financing it at all, isn't that more than just pay it outright with?
It would be, but we don't really have the, we don't have the money necessarily to do that, not without completely draining the account, the reserve account that's, that's there, so.
I'm just saying, going forward, when we anticipate something like that, and a truck that's gonna sell for $40,000 something, would it have that value if it's really that bad of a truck? I mean, that sounds like, it sounds like decent truck if someone's gonna buy it for $40,000.
It probably looks close to 60, doesn't it, Eric?
If it does, yeah, I'm being conservative on saying 50, but, yeah.
I'm just saying, it sounds like a capital expense that going forward could be dealt with differently with, no, I mean, the bank shouldn't be saying, sorry, you've gotta finance this for three or five years.
Oh, well, they're, they're not saying that, I am, because it, we don't have the money in the bank to buy it outright without completely either overexpending that reserve account or depleting it to the point where there's nothing left in case we have a need that comes up, because that's the operating reserve account, or excuse me, not the operating account, the reserve account for all of our town equipment. So if we had a, an issue in the fire department, this is a separate account, but just as example, fire department had a pump, a pump go, and they lost $20,000 that they had to, it's on this coming warrant that you guys look at tonight. So we have a reserve so that we have a bit of a buffer. Otherwise, then we're really in trouble, then we have to go to town meeting and say, we don't have any money in the bank, people, and we need to, we need to come up with money for a project.
I guess I wanna clarify something, we have plenty of money in the bank, we have a couple million dollars.
Thank you.
But it's, right, but it's allocated, it's not allocated for a truck, so you can't just take it because it's there. So that's what you're suggesting, is we just pay for it. And we can't just pay for it because it's not in the account that it needs to be paid from.
I agree, but the, the vote is exactly that, like capital expenditures is exactly that.
It's not a capital expense, it's an operating expense.
Should be. Well, okay, never mind, I'm just playing devil's advocate of are we, are doing this with the best, like, affordable method?
I, I can say that, yes, we are, yeah, we are, because what we're balancing our intelligent use of reserves, like if you wanted to buy a car, you wouldn't empty your bank account to buy a car. You leave money in there in case your roof started to leak. That's what we're doing, and we're gonna be taking the, the difference and financing as little as possible over, I'm gonna suggest a five-year term, but again, we're still working on finalizing that, and, but, but I hear what you're saying, yeah.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, so federal disaster, we did get a declaration for Kennebec County finally. So we will be getting some, some money coming, it looks like it's gonna be 90, 90% covered by state and federal sources. So our piece will be 10%, that's a real big relief for me, it's gonna help us out a lot with our, with our road reserves. Also, it's important to note that some private entities are eligible. So for example, the folks on Tucson Point that had their road washed out, there's a good chance that they could get money to help pay for that repair that they had to pay for out of, out of their association fees because of that natural disaster, but.
Do they know that now?
We're working on it, we, we made the announcement today to the, to the public broadly, but I am gonna reach out to those folks directly to let them know. So anyway, that, that is happening, so anybody in town that had, if you had, you know, basement flooding, if you had property damage from trees falling on your buildings, definitely try to get to the Manchester Fire Station, or, you know, reach out to the town office, and we'll help you figure out how to get in touch with FEMA so you can get some, potentially get some reimbursement. The next item is, we completed the foreclosure process for tax foreclosures, and we didn't have any. So I wanna thank Kristen and Angelica for all of their work to call and to badger and to remind and to cajole and to get me information so that I could make calls and tell people to come in and pay. But because everybody's work, we were able to get everybody in, get everybody paid, and the town doesn't own any property, we didn't a month ago, and that's fantastic. So I wanted to thank the staff for that. Let's see, and we also have the special town meeting tomorrow, 6:00 PM. We did send out a mailer to everybody in town about that, but if you haven't heard, it's 6:00 PM tomorrow at the Alphon Center on Kent Hill, and we'll be there for hopefully less than an hour. We have a potential moderator ready to go, so everything's in place, Kristen's done a lot of work, the heat's turned up, everything's good, and I hope to see a bunch of people there tomorrow at 6:00 PM, and that's my report.
Thank you. Next is boards, committees, commissions, and departments, we received minutes from the Age Friendly Committee for January 10th approved and February 14th. They actually met on Valentine's Day as a draft, and from the Rec Board from January 18th approved minutes. So thank you very much for submitting those and all the work that you do. Yep. Now we move on to public communication, members of the public may address the Select Board if there's, if you're here for something that's not on the agenda. Is there anybody present in the room? No, and online? I don't see Grace, like, coming alive, so. Okay, so we'll move on to old business, item dot, this is where I said we were gonna take some things out of order if it was all right with folks, so the first one would be, I'm gonna find it here, 24-102, consider amending the messenger policy to accommodate business promotion, and then we'll take 24-103, And then we'll take twenty-four dash one zero three, consider proposals for cemetery tree work. And there's Eric just in time. Thank you very much. We are up to Kristin now. So Kristin, if you want to come to the podium, we'll let Eric introduce. Then
Okay, so we're going to talk about the messenger policy, and the select board has had some questions and discussion last meeting about if or how we might be able to accommodate business promotion in the the messenger. So Kristin is here. She puts together our messenger. We have a policy that actually guides how that document is managed. Sorry, I ran up the stairs. I'm trying to get my breath back.
That's okay. And the changes noted are in red.
Yeah, changes noted are in red. And I I'll just say that that this would be a pretty big departure for us from the nature of the publication as it's been a nonprofit and governmental publication. And we've we've had good times with this and we've had bad times. We've had, you know, some conflict that was unnecessary, some things we had to, you know, tell people, you can't put political advertisements in because it it just grew and then we had issues around around some of that stuff. So we put a policy in place several years ago that helped manage what goes in that and and how it how it gets presented, who's responsible for what. I I I believe that what we have is a pretty good balance right now, and I'll just say upfront that I'm not necessarily comfortable moving into a the promotion of for-profit businesses outside of allowing advertising. That's just my personal feeling. I think that when you when you mix public sector and private sector, things can be a little bit messy. It certainly would make it more challenging for Kristin and her job to try to fi- figure out, well, are realtors from out of town who work in Reed Field allowed to advertise, or is it only realtors who live in Reed Field and sell stuff in Reed Field? Questions like that. That's not a deal breaker by any means. I I'm more concerned about just the overall change in in stance and posture. But Kristin can talk about some of her experience with the publication, how the policy works, how she does her job. And we also included in this a fee structure, which we've never really had in place before. It's always been up to Kristin to just kind of say what what was the fee at any given time. But by following our policy, the select board tonight, if you choose, can approve advertising rates that we can use and then have consistently available for for folks that do advertise in the in the messenger. So that's that's my introduction. Kristin, go ahead and tell us what you think.
Oh, yeah, like Eric said, I mean, we have a pretty good messenger policy that's been in place since twenty seventeen. I do spend a good amount of time doing the messenger just with reminders and, you know, asking people to get, you know, their stuff in. Putting in businesses, I feel puts a little bit more on it because when you go into it and we start putting businesses in it, I have to kind of then get a little bit more technical, because I have to see if those businesses in town are following guidelines. If they are an LLC, if they are doing business ads, if they are registered with the town, or if they register with the state. So it gets a little bit more complicated if the business is, you know, following all the rules, things like that. So it gets a little bit more digging, a little bit more deeper when it comes to, you know, being on a website, things like that. So it's more than just putting them in the messenger, you know, things like that. So it does get a little bit more deeper. So it does make the messenger a little bit more trickier to do things. So where the messenger is kind of to get, you know, the word out of everything, advertising businesses are good. We do, I'll correct Eric a little bit, because we do have a small scale of a fee that was put in place. It is in there. Yep, it is in there.
Go ahead, correct me. It's fine.
I'm gonna correct you.
I like being corrected.
There's it was like just a business card size. And then if anyone wanted anything different, it was a discretion, you know, pretty much I would just double, you know. If they want a little bit bigger, then, okay, you want a little bit bigger, you know, you can have, you know, a double business size for doubles the size. I mean, the price. So we kind of just sat down and did a new fee schedule that if somebody wanted to advertise a little bit bigger, then, you know, obviously the price is gonna be a little bit bigger. So that is on the updated one that Eric did go through and do a couple edits on the messenger ad fees that we kind of just sat down and did. If people did want to advertise their business, also with another page in there of combining businesses that if we did do something like a advertising businesses, kind of like a group or whatever, kind of grouping categories together. But I just think you know, just digging into the businesses a little bit more, there is just a lot more to go into it. Definitely a lot more work and so forth. So it's just making sure that, you know, all the businesses are running properly and you know, we have a whole licensing book that's through the state. I do have it. That, I mean, I just found out that if you have a ping pong, there's a ping pong industry or something like licensing, like hey, do you have a ping pong machine? I don't know. But but yeah, so there's just a lot more to the businesses that you really have to sit down and learn about in the licensing and everything for businesses. And of course, following the land use ordinance and things like that. So, but.
I can make this super simple and just take the whole concept off the table, which is what I was gonna do when I arrived today, because I hear you. And what I started at the post office, I did, because COVID was starting and I was shocked. We had like seventy businesses in town, and I'm like, I do not know them and I don't know where they are. And that was because people wanted to shop local to just say, hey, did you know we had a beauty parlor, whatever, you know, people didn't want to go into Walmart. And that was the same thing, is just to do a puff piece on some of the hardworking businesses that we have. But I only have like limited time to do any of it. So I hear it's complex. I don't like the very I don't like what this is generating.
It's a lot of work.
Well, and, you know, it's to say, you know, realtors can be only in the month of November or whatever. I don't, you know, this is just getting far reaching. So let's take that whole concept off the table, because I don't have the time to either to help run after like lots of businesses.
I do like the businesses on the website. I do like, I have reached out to the businesses on the website and trying to like update the information. Sometimes the emails bounce back, so I, you know, I try to, you know, go to the websites just to try and update the information too, but it does take a lot of time to see if they still are a business. You know, I have a spreadsheet, but, you know, or if I know somebody moves out of town, well, obviously their business moved out of town too, so I know that their business isn't in town anymore, things like that, but.
And that's, I mean, your time is valuable to not have to have to do that.
Because, you know, and if somebody does a DBA with the town, they're actually supposed to withdraw from your town too, but a lot people don't do that, but there's a form that you're supposed to withdraw from the town as well and things like that. But a lot of people don't know that they have to do a DBA unless they go to a bank. And they say, you know, you need a DBA if you're not an LLC or an incorporation. So there's just a lot of things that some people just don't know about, so.
And thank you for the extensive work you do every single month. It is very helpful.
Other comments from the rest of the board?
Well, if we're gonna withdraw it, I think the point is move.
Well, I, can I add something? Or, okay, you want you go first, Catherine?
So I actually think we shouldn't withdraw it. So I have, listening to what you've said, Kristin, if we wanted to list them in the messenger, we have to make sure that they are listed properly as a business. So we should be doing that for them to be on the website.
Yep, and that's what I do.
So we have to step back, I think, and make sure that everything that's listed on the website is correct. You know, like correctly noticed to the public that they are a business. So if the website's correct, then that's not an issue for putting it into the messenger, because now that work is already done. So I don't like the idea that we have things on the website that aren't correct. So I think we need to go and correct that. And then we probably ought to have a form that if anybody wants to be on the website, you need to submit a copy of your letterhead or your, if you're an LLC, you have a incorporation paper that you file every year and pay for.
And you can go off, actually, you can actually go search, you can just go right on the website, the state of Maine, and look at it.
Right, but they should list what their number is so that you can just easily go check it, so that you're not doing that legwork. And if they're not, then they need to give you something that shows their DBA. And if it's just a little home business done on eBay, that doesn't count. And so it can't be on the website because we have guidelines for that. I actually liked the idea, and I'm the one who put together the two charts, and the idea was just to take the list on the website. So we'll make it simple. So like group one is carpentry, construction, and excavating. So there are currently twelve things listed. So you take one sheet on the messenger and you just list what's on the website on this page. So that we're bringing it to the attention of anyone who's looking at the messenger. Here are businesses in these fields in this town. And then open it up so that those people could be notified that, hey, next month or two months from now, we're going to have a listing of all these construction businesses. If you'd like to put an ad in, that'd be great. It'll be on the facing page. So they could submit an ad, and that would give us some revenue that would help to pay for the messenger. And if you had twenty businesses tomorrow, just decide they wanted to start setting up ads with you, you would take the time to do that.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to put it in there, I obviously I take the time, you know.
So, I mean, I think that's a great way to promote local business without promoting it. It's not a promotion to bring awareness. So I think it would be very easy, as long as the website's correct.
Yes.
Then we could just do that, but we can't be listing a hundred and ninety we can't be listing ninety-four businesses every month.
Oh, yeah, definitely. The website is
The website has
A lot of updating, because
Yes, we, I mean, Teresa and I go through it and we look through and we're like yeah, and we we go through and we will delete people that we know have, that they're not in business anymore, they're not.
Like DuPont daycare, they're still in town, but she closed that a while ago. And I think I've reached out to her and her husband has some other business. I go, do you guys still want to be listed? She's like, no. And I've got a list of the ones that I've done, and I'll share that with you, but I think before all of that, we have to make sure they're accurate, which
And that was a question, that was one of the questionable ones that we were wondering about.
So I I think it's a a good idea.
I still, sorry.
I don't see much difference between having it on the website and putting in the messenger.
I think the difference with the website is everybody's there every every time you click on it. I think if you put something in the messenger, you're choosing which month something could be highlighted. And again, you could end up with, but why are they on there in March and I'm not there in March? Wouldn't it be better if hotel and lodging was there in the spring and, you know? I think there's that element that, and I don't want to get into it, to be honest. And that's kind of my thought of it too. And you're, somebody would be annoyed with where they fell in the calendar of the year.
I think most businesses would be happy to have any mention of them anywhere.
Maybe we could just put these lists and say, you could put it back, please remember to check put a QR code, all the businesses in town, you know? If you want to just direct people's eyes.
To give my two cents, so that's funny.
But I I agree with Sean is like, real estate and lodging should be like springtime. So the timing was just that, but I don't know. Exactly. No, I I appreciate the time you took on that, too. I don't know. It's complex.
So is there, Steve or Dave, any other input?
The only other, I think Sean probably right is the 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 website is there all the time, like you said. So I think the only way to do anything different than that would be the what if you twice a year publish the business list in that packet, and then it just comes out twice a year?
We could do that, or monthly, just have a business, well, not a business card, somewhere in the messenger each month just unmentioned that there is a business listing for all the businesses in the town of Reed Field on the website, and like you said, the QR code with it.
A reminder.
Yeah, because I do that sometimes too, and I need like a filler. I'll be like, advertise your business here, you know, too, and I'll put that in there too, you know, in the messenger.
That, to me, would make me just as happy as changing this.
Yeah, and I make QR codes all the time, so.
And what do we feel about the new fees? We could go ahead and adopt those anytime or in any case, just so that if people do want to advertise, it would help to pay for Kristin's time offset.
So we haven't had those?
We, the top, it says the current fees was just the business part.
The top, and then other than that, if somebody wanted something more, then I just kind of was like, okay, I'll just
I mean, they're just incremental, but at least it's listed. So if someone was interested, they didn't have to figure it out, make the phone call, talk to somebody.
No, it's standardized.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was an outcome of this discussion that you all started. So there's already, you know, there's definitely positive outcomes. And I think, Catherine, you said a lot of the stuff I was going to about the fact that there are other things that that Kristin can do and that we can do as a town to help, you know, support, promote businesses. So I think that it's been a good worthwhile discussion, absolutely. And
I kind of like Dave's idea to maybe periodically list and pick months that don't matter, so nobody's getting upset.
Include like a full directory once or twice a year, so people can hang it on their refrigerator.
Maybe that's would be a way to even kind of clean it up a little bit too, because like, somebody could see and be like, well, I really don't have this business anymore. Maybe I should call them and have it taken off. If it happens to be not, you know, like, right, wasn't able to.
But what about if we copy some off and have them at the town hall or the post office? If someone wants to pick them up? I don't know. And then it's a paper thing that they have, and then, I don't know.
Do we need to approve anything, or do you have enough direction from the board now to proceed?
A good direction, I would appreciate approval of the fee schedule, because that is a more technical thing, so.
Is there a motion on that?
But there's that other, like, red thing, three point five, or so is that defunct?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, but so we would update the rest of this, actually. That's a good point, Carol.
So I'd like to make a motion to update the messenger policy, but retract section three point five and approve the fee schedule as presented.
Okay, I'll take Carol's second, Sean's motion. I heard it first, sorry, Steve.
Sorry.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing not all those in favor? Thank you very much, Kristin. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, I'll get back to it. I'll find your number, Ben.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four dash one zero three, consider proposals for cemetery tree work. Eric, do you have anything to introduce, or were you only Ben?
I'll just introduce Ben Rodriguez, our cemetery sexton.
Hello, hello. Thank you for your time. I'm gonna be talking about scheduled work during the fiscal year twenty-four involving the cemeteries in particular Kinsel Cemetery, Dudley Plain Cemetery, Case Cemetery, and East Reed Field. The reason being the cemetery committee and myself have been quite active in addressing the trees throughout the cemeteries over the past couple of years. And with that in mind, there wasn't enough in one cemetery in particular to take on during this current fiscal year budget. So in coordination with the cemetery committee and with the assistance of Eric, I picked out a couple other cemeteries that involve multiple trees to be taken care of to kind of try to take try to take or do and plan work as much as possible, rather than just picking one cemetery and just doing a few trees throughout. So I'll just quickly discuss the process I went through in getting this RFP out, and then I'll do my darndest to walk through the bid tabulation sheet and whatnot. So Eric assisted me in drafting the RFP, and after I had sent it or put it on to the website with Angelica's assistance, I contacted the various arborists that we have on our contractor list involving one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, ten or eleven various arborists in the in the area, surrounding area as well. And luckily, we received four different arborists attending the pre-mandatory meeting and showing, those being Stevenson Solutions, Cool and Tree Service, Fornia Tree Service, and Hawks Tree Service. And as part of that RFP, in order to be eligible to submit a bid, you would have to attend that pre-mandatory meeting and showing. And one of the things that I expressed when the various arborists and myself walked around to the various cemeteries was that I'm not a professional arborist, so all that I can kind of pass along is the the kind of lessons I've learned and various ways of kind of like looking at some of the and, uh, various ways of kind of like looking at some of the trees and saying, well, that definitely needs to have work done on it. So what I made sure to express to these arborists that attended is that in most cases on the RFP, I did propose a treatment, however, I left it up to their judgment if there were additional treatments necessary um, to hopefully save us the time and hassle if there was a tree that I didn't notice needed a particular treatment that was not proposed on the RFP. Um, that does in some cases lead to some complexity, but my thought is that being able to receive the, uh, various views of different arborists allows us a better and more widespread capacity to address the, the various trees in the cemetery. So, um, what we have, I believe in front of you is the bid tabulation sheet. So you can see on the far left-hand side, you've got the list of the tree, the cemeteries. So you've got like Kinsel Cemetery and list of tree number one, one B two. Um, and then if you go towards the right, you can see that there's two columns going straight down from Stevenson Solution, two columns going down from Pool and Tree, and the same for Forney or Tree Service and Hawk Tree Service. So you can see if you go from left to right under like tree number one, the treatment suggested under Stevenson Solutions would be trim low hanging branches for two hundred dollars. Under the same tree, the treatment suggested trim low hanging branches, two hundred dollars. Treatment under Forney or Tree Service, trim low hanging branches again, and then so on and so forth. And then what I had done was I split each cemetery and totaled those numbers, splitting it up into the, the total based on the proposed treatment in the RFP and then total with any recommendations provided by the arborist. I'll walk through briefly the Dudley Plain Cemetery first, Case Cemetery and East Reedfield, because those are the more, uh, straightforward cemeteries. And then I'll get into the, uh, little bit of confusion, uh, with Kent Hill Cemetery. So you can see with Dudley Plain Cemetery, you've got trees number one through five and then the various proposed treatments with no recommendations all being removed. These are a cluster of trees in the back right-hand corner, um, that are not in the best of shape. So it's pretty clear on the, the various, uh, management being the removal of those trees. And you can see under Stevenson Solutions and in the, the bid explanation that I sent out, I narrowed it down to both Stevenson Solution and, uh, Pool and Tree being the most, uh, kind of financially competitive options out of the four. I was extraordinarily grateful to have, uh, four arborists, um, coming on the RFP to be able to provide a range of both treatments and the cost associated with those treatments. But based on how close these two were, um, those are the kind of ones that I'll be, uh, focusing on. So you can see under, uh, trees number one through five, all the removal costs and the total for that between Stevenson Solution and Pool and Tree was nine hundred fifty dollars for Stevenson, a thousand dollars for Pool and Tree, going down to Case Cemetery. And this is where you can see the first example of an alternative recommendation. So you've got tree number one, trim overhanging branches in Deadwood, two hundred fifty dollars under Stevenson. Under Pool and Tree, trim overhanging branches in Deadwood, three hundred dollars, uh, with Pool and, and then, uh, the Maple. There was, uh, a alternative recommended, uh, under the original proposed treatment for that tree, trim overhanging branches in Deadwood being two hundred fifty dollars. And Pool and had just provided a cost associated with the removal. And that would have, uh, was proposed to be fifteen hundred. And then the alternative recommendation under Stevenson for this, for the removal cost would be five hundred. So if you look down, the total for that cemetery without any recommendations under Stevenson's, five hundred, under Pool and eighteen hundred, um, and then with recommend, uh, recommended, um, alternative options, we have seven hundred and fifty for Stevenson. Going down to East Reedfield Cemetery, you've got Maple Tree one and two, another example of both providing the proposed treatment cost and then an alternative treatment cost, which allows us kind of flexibility in, um, carrying out various tree work. Because maybe this coming year, we would just do trimming over, overhanging branches as opposed to removing the tree to allow, um, you know, if the tree doesn't need to be removed. And again, kind of getting the opinions of the arborists, if they're like, well, this is a really terrible tree, I would suggest taking it down. Then obviously going with the alternative treatment. Uh, nonetheless, you can see with Maple Tree number one, uh, trim overhanging branches, three hundred dollars with Stevenson. Um, uh, trim overhanging branches under Pool and two hundred dollars. All skip, but you can kind of get an idea of how I broke this down. The difficulty with Kent Hill Cemetery was, uh, Pool and had not provided a, uh, treatment, uh, pro, uh, option and the cost associated with that treatment for one B. The reason I had it listed as one B is when I did the mandatory meeting and showing, when we were walking around the cemetery, a arborist from Hawks Tree Service had pointed out that tree. And I had mentioned to the other arborists, um, that were in attendance that I would update the RFP and send that out to them. And I called, uh, Andrew Poole and today to discuss why he had left out that, uh, particular treatment and the cost associated with the treatment. Um, and he had said, he, he, he had missed it and I also, uh, thought that it may have been because I had not updated the RFP on the website, so when he had printed it off, it may not have shown that change. Uh, for me, that, um, wasn't particularly critical with one B and two being, uh, trees that I would be willing to hold off on this year anyway. Um, just because with the spruce tree in particular, it just had some woodpecker holes. That was one of the trees in the RFP that I had left without, uh, proposed treatment. Just seeing the, the woodpecker holes, I wasn't sure if that would affect the, the health of the tree, if it was in danger of falling. And, um, as you can see with the proposed treatment from Hawks Tree Service, they just mentioned that no treatment was recommended. Um, so, but what I had done to try to compensate for not having one B um, was adding up the, the different costs without one B and without, uh, tree number two. Um, but obviously that kind of complicated things a little bit more than, than one would like. But just to, I can, I can provide those numbers as well, but you can also see on the, uh, the bid tabulation sheet that I provided, when, if you go down to the bottom, you can see, uh, the total bid for each of the at Stevenson Solutions and Pool and Tree, and then the, the total bid with, um, uh, recommendations, uh, being relatively close. I had ultimately, um, in discussion with the, with the cemetery committee, I, I proposed to them to go with Pool and Tree. It is depending on if you go with the proposed treatments or the alternative treatments, a little bit more, uh, expensive. However, my thought is in developing, uh, additional relationship with arborists in the area. I've had extensive experience with Stevenson Solution and a little bit experience with Greg Goucher in addressing various trees throughout the cemeteries. And I have, you know, full faith and confidence with both of those arborists. My thought was just to seize the opportunity to develop an additional relationship with an arborist. If we found ourselves in the future in need of emergency, uh, work needing to be done in the cemeteries, if we had another windstorm or, um, a lightning strike or whatever it may be, to have that built up capacity. So if one arborist was particularly busy, we could shift to another arborist, and if that arborist was busy, go to another one. So it just allows us, uh, that flexibility in continuing to care for the cemeteries. So my, my proposed selection would be for Pool and Tree, however, I'm, uh, more than receptive to go with Stevenson Solutions if that is the, uh, favor of the select board and I'm up for any questions you may have.
Unless Andrew is less, it's, it's tough to, to, uh, award a contract to somebody who's already done business with you from a lesser value, because I can tell you, from a personal standpoint, if I always did your tree work, and I understand what you're saying about having that other option open, and you awarded a bid for four hundred dollars more, the next time you called in an emergency, I'd say, call him. So you gotta be careful about how you. I would say if, i- i- it would be one thing if Andrew was cheaper. I mean, depending on what you're actually gonna do here, I don't know exactly what you're gonna do. I mean, if you pick certain things out there and the price is cheaper, then by all means, that makes sense. I'd listen to whatever anybody else thinks on that.
So on the, on that particular point, um, and of course, this kind of gets, gets in the weeds a little bit here. Um, but if, if you took out the totals without tree, uh, one B and tree number two, um, which again, those are two particular trees that I'd be willing to hold off on, just to kind of, because it, it, in my mind, would be unfair to judge two different, uh, you know, totals based on one tree that didn't, you know, make the list. Because ob- obviously, depending on the, the price of the other trees, they, they may be lower, but artificially lower if you're not taking into account that. So by taking out tree one B and two, um, Stevenson Solutions without recommendations, um, came out to, um, fifty-four hundred. And then, um, with recommendations was six thousand five hundred and fifty, trying to think here, um.
No, when I add them up, it's three thousand three fifty for Stevenson.
Mm-hmm, and then three thousand two hundred for Pool and Tree, you had mentioned three thousand.
Three thousand four hundred.
But I think that was including the two hundred dollar, because I added it up a few times and that was with the two hundred dollars from tree number two. Um, and that involves with, with Kent Hill Cemetery, um.
So, what, this is Sean, when I look at this too quickly, you know, the only, it seems that Andy and Stevenson are, they're just right on top. They're right on par with every tree but one.
Right.
Right, they're.
And certainly, we have nothing against Andrew or any.
But I think for me, because I'm getting confused, I just want to know, how many trees do we really want to take down? Which one, which do we think is the best option? Who's the cheapest? Let's go with that one. And the way this is read right now, I, I don't understand that, Ben, so I just want, I think I'd like to see it clearer on, yeah, we definitely want to go with this recommendation, it's been common by all the bids, blah, 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 and this one's this much, this one's that much, and let's go, I'm happy to go with the cheapest of this. Who we've already worked with, great, and if it's somebody new, great, and that's, that's what my recommendation is right now.
Steve?
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with that, I think that, Ben, you know, it's like, it's a little hard to judge because, you know, there are alternative treatments for some of them. And, you know, I know you're not a professional arborist, but I think that we should try to decide, and this is, this is what we're gonna do and what we're gonna base the bid on. And then I do think that, you know, it, it would, it would be hard, it'd be hard, Chris, even though they are close to award the, the contract to someone who is not the low bidder, because they are so close in other respects, I just think that's the right move.
Well, I think the way that comes out then, if it's two hundred plus, it's fifty-three hundred for Pool and and fifty-four. Take out two hundred, fifty-two hundred versus fifty-four hundred for Stevenson, if you take out one B and two.
With the base, the base, and not with the alternative work.
With what each of them called their base.
Okay.
Yes.
So how did it come out?
Their two hundred dollars on.
But which ones plus?
Uh, Stevenson is fifty-four and Pool and was fifty-two. So I'm just putting in my two cents now.
And you're saying that takes out one B and two?
Yes.
Right?
All of one B and two, no alternatives, nothing. And I don't care if they get included, if Ben wants to include them, but it's not fair to compare the bids because one person didn't bid on one of them.
Right, and so like, for tree two, right? Um, Stevenson recommended removal and Pool and recommended trimming, which is obviously significantly different cost, right? So you're, that fifty-two hundred number and fifty-four hundred number is based on their, their.
Their recommendations.
Right? So there's, there's a big difference there, uh, it's a thousand dollar difference right there, right?
Right, and there's a similar.
Two approaches, and so I, that's why I asked Ben, I, I would like to know his opinion on this, like, is it appropriate to just trim that spruce tree? Or do we need to remove it? Because that's gonna make a big difference.
But did you say we're taking that tree out of it? Is that one of the ones you're?
That I, I would be willing to hold off on, uh, what I did to attempt to make things, but I'm, I'm confusing myself. So definitely lessons learned this go around. I had done the, the bid totals with just taking out one B being the particular tree that kind of messes with this. And again, uh, what you had, had mentioned, Steve, with the different proposed treatments, um, one may mention, you know, removing and one just may mention trimming. With taking out one B, uh, the, the total for the cemetery work would be under Stevenson Solutions, six thousand six hundred. Under Pool and would be six thousand six hundred, but if you include the total with recommended work, which if I could get i- i- in the kind of, the differences would be removing a few more trees. But in my mind, some of the, the trees like in East Reedfield being so old, um, I, I would be in favor of removing them. But in carrying out any work, I want to have that flexibility, because I know some members of the cemetery committee are particularly mindful of preserving the trees for as long as we can to ensure the continued natural his, and historic beauty of the cemeteries. Nonetheless, um, so both of them come out to the same without any recommendations. And with recommendations, Stevenson's is significantly lower, being seven thousand seven hundred and fifty and Pool and Tree being, uh, eight thousand six hundred. So I think if we just base it off of the total capability of work being done, Taylor would be, um, the cheaper option. And I would be in favor of, of going with them with that in mind to ensure that fiscal responsibility and ensuring that we would be able to, if the cemetery committee in coordination with myself, uh, chose to perform that extra work, then we would have that ability to remain lower and not potentially spend more, um, with an alternative, um, arborist.
So the numbers you just used, is that?
They're not on, on this list.
No, but is that trimming two, tree two, or removing tree two?
That would be with recommendations would be, um, the, the lower recommendation would be with just trimming. And the higher recommendation would be, um, for removal. If, if that was the only option for Taylor, which under two would be twelve hundred, I added that into the recommended work. Because that for me, that tree number two, having the, the opinion of, um, under Hawks Tree Service, that no treatment would be done, I didn't think that that necessitated the need of work. So I would just apply that, you know, removal cost.
So is it okay if we ask Ben to work with you, Eric, and just checking through with the cemetery committee, fine tuning these numbers? I trust Catherine's history with math, you know? And so I've just heard so many different numbers, I trust you too, Ben. I would just rather see this again cleaner to make a motion.
Yeah, we, we can do that, and I think also we're, we're starting to get into the, like, are we removing it from the, the, the bid tabulation or from removing it from the cemetery?
Yeah.
So I think that you're right, that we should just take a step back, um, condense this, um, uh, firm up the numbers and bring it back on the eleventh so we can make a decision.
And the benefit we have addressing this right now is this work wouldn't be carried out until, uh, firm ground conditions come, middle of spring, late spring, the work being completed by the new fiscal year being July first, um, so.
So this is out of this current budget?
This would be out of this current budget, but the work wouldn't be carried out for a few months. So as long as we're able to get this done, you know, in the next month, that would provide me enough time to reach out to all the arborists and form the selected arborist who is, uh, uh, approved to receive the, the bid to then, you know, plan with them to carry out the work and make those, you know, selections and plan with them. So we're not in like a time crunch where we need to make sure to get this done tonight, because the work's gonna be done while the ground's frozen. We have this time to bring this back, fine tune the information, so it's not a, a confusing mess to be able to provide you with the streamlined information to try to make the most informed decision possible.
So let's be clear on what we're asking for. By the way, my opinion was that I, I think I agree with Dave. If, if the cost is very similar and we've had a, a business that has been doing things for us and I think Taylor's always come when he's been called.
One hundred percent.
Um, I think maintaining that relationship is, is worth even a couple hundred dollars difference in cost. We don't always go with low bid, um, there are times we've gone with no bid. I mean, we've had four bids and we've turned them down for different projects, because we didn't feel comfortable with what was proposed. Um, so we're not a town that has to take the low bid. Um, so are we asking, Ben, to tell us exactly which trees and just between the two lower bidders? Stevenson and Pool and.
Where we were headed.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
And I think, I think we're okay with just seeing a total. We don't need to see. We don't need to see per tree and have a discussion about that, am I right?
As long as it's apples to apples.
Yep.
Yeah, there's no apple trees.
There's no health trees in here.
You, you asked that Dave.
That was the wrong answer.
Yeah.
I walked right into that.
So as long as you come up with the list of trees and they're the same for each company, give us a number and then we'll. We'll make a, yeah, you're, well, we'll pick one at our next meeting.
Mm hmm, yeah.
So we'll put it on the next agenda.
It makes total sense.
Okay.
Ben, thanks for doing this, for like, taking this on, you know, it's, uh, I, I appreciate that you tried really hard to lay it all out for us, you know? Um, but I also think that, um, we, we need it to be simpler for us.
Yeah, I, I had a discussion with Eric this morning about, uh, learning from this, uh, complicated. Um, kinda graph for us and kind of like trying to standardize it in the future, so we can have that more, uh, apples to apples comparison.
This was really good. It's just that the way the alternatives fed into it was not good, but the chart is great.
Yep.
And laying it out like that is awesome.
Yeah, so thanks for your work out there.
Just one suggestion, um, the last three lines, um, when you have a really dark highlight, it makes it not scan well.
Mm hmm.
I know it looks good when you're printing it. But when we scan it and printed it, it's hard to read.
And if anybody does happen to have any other arborists that they would like to add to the contractor list, um, like I said, I was very happy with the. The, the number of and the arborist that chose to come out to the pre-mandatory meeting and submit bids. But it is always nice in the future to have any more that we can, uh, to, you know, have as many competitive offers as possible, so. I really appreciate your time, I'll give this information back to you, um, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks.
And we have local options, which is awesome.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Ben.
Bye, everybody.
Yeah.
Thanks, we'll move back to old business now, twenty four dash zero four three here and consider an update on the Fairgrounds project. I'm not meaning to shortchange anybody's project time, but we are behind, so, um, if brevity is a possibility, it might be wise.
I have no updates.
That's pretty darn brief, okay?
Make one comment?
Of course.
I, I know, I know, Steve, I know, uh, but, um, so we, we are making work with, moving forward with the fundraising and, um, grant matching and all that stuff, and I. Greg's here, so I wanna thank Greg Lombach for, uh, moving forward with the, um, uh, uh, National Guard, um, training, uh, program that would allow us to utilize them. So we finally got that sorted out today, um, so we're, um, we're, we're rolling.
What's, what's the sort?
Do you have anything you wanna add Greg?
No sort?
No, you have to go to the podium.
Also, is that the update?
That's the update.
Okay, good.
Find anything that needs to be added. And then it'll be, and then I'm gonna add the contractor estimate that I saw in the last packet.
Go to the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know, well, when you were just gonna have one phrase, but people at home can't hear you and it's not on the tape then.
So, uh, I'm go, I, I just saw the contract or the engineer estimate the other day, so I'll, I'll add that, uh. And I'll, I'll talk to my counterpart in Augusta, that'll be very helpful then.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks for working on that Greg, by the way.
That was the main point, to just thank Greg for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and are, what are we looking to have for fundraising efforts prior to town meeting?
Uh, well, so we're ongoing, we'll, we will be, um, with this National Guard piece, um, we are working on, uh, now that we have the final information. Getting stuff, getting the Alphon component going, uh, those are the big chunks, but also I think that it is important, um, that we start doing on the ground fundraising, and I, I know the board and myself have. I volunteered or donated, um, committed to donating funds for this project, I think that we need to continue to work on that with. The community and start, um, trying to get some money, um, uh, and some interest and awareness going, uh, more than what we already have.
And these are pledges, these aren't donations.
That's right, yeah, these are pledges.
Is the formal pledge letter been finalized?
Uh, it's not been finalized, but we do have a draft.
Okay, great, so.
So I have a question, um. We, some of us, and we say that we're not using public funds for this, but. Maintenance going forward will be a factor, um, and possibly require some town funding, um. And so I think we asked long ago, I did, about upkeep of the gardens and so on and so forth. Um, one thing that I mentioned at the last meeting or, or the last group meeting. Um, is trees where kids are playing and trees require maintenance, I know, I've got hundred year old maples that we take care of. And surrounding a ball court, um. Basketball court, when their season is going into the fall, if we can just, um. I think we're spending thirty thousand dollars on. Trees or plantings, um. If we can just keep in mind the maintenance of trees around ball areas and where kids are playing and throwing balls and hanging out and riding bikes. Um, and also I think there were trees proposed in the parking lot, so if, if. We're accommodating a tree where we can put one or two other parking spots, if we can just keep in mind. Um, trees and maintenance and maintenance in general is a, a thing, and if we can just. Maybe be cognizant of where we're putting plantings and paying money for plantings. In an area where people are playing or people are parking and maximize parking and play space, that would be very much appreciated.
Okay. All right, um, item twenty four dash zero four four, an update on the Church Road sidewalk project, Eric, we had a hearing last week?
We had a hearing last week, uh, and that's the big update, uh, it was, uh, well attended, I think we probably had close to forty people between in person and, uh, on, on Zoom. So that was very much appreciated, we had some, um, good feedback, some of the same concerns, um, we've had in the past, but also some new ones. Um, and then, uh, and a chance to kind of explain, uh, more about, um, you know, the fact that the scope of the project. Uh, is really to address the, the, the parking and the, uh, the, excuse me, the safety, uh, on the road, the safety on the road is the reason we're doing this. Um, the parking is, is helpful, but that's not, um. The reason it's there is, is more because it helps with traffic calming, um. It is nice to have an extra parking spot and that will help businesses downtown, um, but, but that was a, a kind of a, a, a point of discussion was, well, why do we have the parking there? Um, and it really is twofold, uh, but, um, other comments that came up, uh, were around, um, drainage, um, and it is important to note that. Um, the sidewalk doesn't change the amount of water, um, it doesn't change, uh, where that water outflows, it might change to some small extent, the velocity. Uh, but that's just the velocity leading the pipe, once it gets into, um, any outside drainage systems, the velocity, it, it goes right back to what it would be normally. Um, and again, um, we are trying to have a very narrow scope, um, this is a federally funded project, very strict requirements. Um, the same requirements that we had to go through for, for Main Street, uh, sidewalk, um, so the drainage is important. But one of the things that we can't do is fix existing drainage problems unless they relate directly to. The project, so I know people are saying, well, you're doing the work already, why can't you just fix my driveway? Well, i- it's because it's on the opposite side of the road, and that problem isn't affected by or made worse by or relevant to. The, the drainage that's happening and being affected by the, the sidewalk that may go in, so, um, we've had to try to clarify some of those things. Um, and I will say that one good thing to know is that we've identified a few areas where, uh, town resources outside of federal dollars. Uh, might be applied to help fix people's driveways, um, and we're gonna work on that, but it is important to note that, that there's some separation there that has to happen. Uh, because this is a federally funded project and the project is already much more expensive than we'd originally planned because. It, we now have, you know, split side design, we now have additional, um, uh, you know, curbs and bump outs and, and, and things related to the parking. Uh, which again is good because all of that activity, all of that, um, uh, difference in where the, the road edge is. Makes people say, whoa, something's different here, I need to slow down, um, and that's, uh, some of the engineers have been working on, um, in conjunction with those, uh, speed tables. Uh, to, to help make sure that we have an area where people do slow down for the benefit of the residents on the road as well as anybody using that. Um, that, that piece of sidewalk, so, um, it was a good worthwhile discussion, uh, it does, um. Wrap up the formal hearing process as far as the federal government's concerned, um, what happens next is we will have more discussions. As we prepare for the town meeting vote, right? So when we have our three public hearings, uh, that we talk about the budget and warrant, we're gonna have a few minutes, not, not a ton, maybe twenty minutes the most, I'd say. Um, but to, to hear more questions and maybe answer some of them for this particular project, just like we will with the Fairgrounds project. Which will also be on the warrant, again, the, the way these things are coming together, there is no additional, you know, tax impact for the construction phase. However, you're absolutely right Carol, both of these projects are gonna have ongoing maintenance and that is something that we're very aware of. And we don't wanna shy away from acknowledging that, um, so we will have ongoing maintenance costs, um, for both of these facilities, um, in my view, it's worth it. We're, we're, we're buying some security, uh, and safety for people in town, we're buying a quality of life, uh, that I think is important, especially with that ball field. Uh, expansion, that, that, that's really about a community project and the sidewalk, I think, it, it relates to that pretty tightly, so, um. It was a good public hearing, we have a good, clear process going forward, the engineers have more work to do, uh, but they're not going to dig into. Um, getting beyond that fifty percent layout until we have a town meeting vote, because we don't wanna be putting more money into this if it gets voted down, so. Um, that's where we are, that's where we're headed, and, uh, the update on the sidewalk.
We, if it does get voted down though, we will have to repay funds that we have got back through the grant process.
We would have to pay for the engineering funds to date, uh, which will account to, by the time that, that this phase is done, about seventy five thousand dollars. Um, so we would be responsible for all of that and not just the twenty percent share we've put in already, so.
And so we had discussed previously that it's important to let the public know that. It's not a twisting the knife situation, it's letting them know this is the reality. If we go forward with it, the cost is X, if we don't go forward with it, the cost is Y. What we've paid is C, which is significantly lower, so if we don't approve this, there will be an increased cost. If we do approve it, it will be an increased cost that's greater, but the payment for this is coming out of funds that we already have.
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Carol?
I have a question, so after attending the meeting, I have a concern. With three speed bumps or raised beds, whatever, within a zero point two mile. Distance from the Fairgrounds to the Union Meeting House, and this weekend I. Drove Church Road trying to like visualize. That seemed a lot, um, and I am envisioning a plow truck trying to clean off snow over three. Significant bumps, and then if you envision yourself on a school bus. Doing that or envision yourself on a bike with a backpack with a bat and a helmet. I, I've never heard, um, discussed before the raised bed or raised crosswalk, that was a new concept to me, and I don't know. Do we need that? That seems like the, what makes almost those three speed bumps in that distance really excessive, um.
The, the raised side, the raised crosswalk has been, was there at the last meeting and was discussed at the first meeting when we had the. Just the two sides, the east side and the west side, and when we talked about, when the public talked about, oh, could we have a hybrid? It was to have a, a crosswalk, um, and the engineer gave us the explanation for having the three, so if you have a raised crosswalk, you have to have. Something in each direction that's raised before it, you don't wanna just have people speeding towards a raised crosswalk and bang.
I hear that, and I don't oppose. The two on either end approaching the crosswalk and we're gonna have the flashing light, which is fabulous. I don't see the need for the raised crosswalk, we don't have it anywhere else in town. Kent Hill by a school doesn't have it anywhere else in town, I can't think of many other towns that have a raised crosswalk, I guess the need for that. Seems like a big expense, I love the flashing light, I love the painted lines. Three of them in short succession, that's short, so just, just walk it or drive it and you just go, wow, this is. It seems like a lot.
These are good comments to send to the engineers, right?
They will be, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure.
Letting Eric know and letting the engineers know.
I'm not a fan of any of the speed bumps, but there will be, we're gonna have more meetings about this, correct?
Right, and those, they're not speed bumps really, they're.
They're tables.
They're tables, it's six feet approaching.
Twenty two feet wide.
Ten foot top and a six foot down, it's not a bump bump.
What if you're driving a dump truck with an excavator, it's a speed bump.
Well, yes.
And we're not taking into account that, that's, uh, for me, it seems like we're only thinking about. The people that are at. The Fairgrounds and the people that live there, we're not taking into account the businesses and the farms and the people that use that road otherwise. Uh, going up and down there, that, that's.
But if you're going twenty five, which is the posted speed limit there, it's not a particularly big bump, it's the people who come down. When I'm on that road several times a week, people are going fifty five and sixty coming up to, to town. Um, so yeah, that's a pretty significant bump at that speed, and you know, they slow down to maybe thirty five when they're almost at the corner, and then they stop. That's, that's the typical people on that road, it's, it's a fast road.
Well, they'll still go fifty five till the ste- speed bump, slam the brakes on.
And then we've got a real problem, cause now we have an icy speed bump and a fast car, I'm just saying, um.
But these are things to discuss at the meeting.
Winter pill in, in Augusta is a good example of that, and they don't have, that stopped all the speeding on that hill, they have two speed bumps on that, you know, speed tables.
But I can say, I mean, this is something we have been discussing with the engineers, I'll continue to, I'll, I'll bring it up to them again. Uh, because you know, the, the, those three speed tables are, are a cost driver, they probably add fifty thousand between the three of them to the cost of the project. Um, but it's been recommended, so we wanna be careful about saying whether or not we want to do it. Because I think there's, there's things that are beneficial about them and there's certain things that are, that are less desirable, um, and having a big, you know, twenty foot, I mean, that's the width of this room basically. Um, twenty, twenty two feet, um. That's a sizable piece of, piece of asphalt to, to contend with from a lot of different perspectives, um, so there's value, I think, and, and, it would absolutely slow people down. Way better than paint, um, and that's what we have to question is whether or not. That, um, outcome i- is what we're looking for, um, um, and so, uh, I'll talk to the engineers about it again and, uh, and, um. We'll talk about it at the couple, next couple of public hearings too.
And I, I know that the rules are different on state highways, then, what did they tell us, that was a class five road, it's a local road, so on state highways, you don't ever have raised tables. So we can't really compare the other ones we have in town to that because it's a whole different road. Road type.
Yep, I mean, so I will say it's not uncommon to have those type of structures in built up areas with federally funded projects, so. Um, definitely something that, that, um, when I did my training for this with the, um, DOT, you know. This was a, a non, non-common thing to talk about, but, um, not every project does it, uh, we just need to decide whether that's right for us in this area, um, so.
But just, if people just go look at it and just picture it.
Oh yeah, I bike it all the time, um, I understood, yeah.
Okay. Uh, so we'll, uh, twenty four dash zero four seven, select word action item reporting, does anyone have an update from the last meeting on an? Something you've been working on?
I don't, you're probably happy we don't tonight.
Steve? Um, the only thing is that they have not yet started the weekend walking because there's not a community person available to get the key. Just, you know.
Yep.
It's, it's available, if the interest is there and someone is willing to be responsible, one of the walkers, for opening, one person was, but then they are going away for a month and a half or some big, big changes. That's all.
Carol, anything?
Nope.
Nothing for me. That was quick, onto new business, item twenty four dash one zero one, discuss the proposed community programming coordinator position, Eric, this is you.
Sure, I'll make it brief, um, basically this is just an update, uh, showing you what we have and where we're headed. Uh, with the planning work that's been going into the community programming, uh, coordinator position, um. This, uh, job description, uh, put together last week, it still needs to go out to the, um, to the rec committee and, and, and others, but. Uh, the idea is that we worked backwards from the scope of services that we were looking at, uh, and that we did talk about in the past. Uh, meshed it with some other, um, you know, standard, uh, uh, town job descriptions, uh, and I think have a fairly comprehensive. Um, uh, job description that we can use, uh, when we go through the hiring process for this position, uh, if and when I hope it's approved, um. At, at town meeting, so, uh, this is just an update and I'm happy to take any comments or questions from the board about, uh, the job description or the, um, the, the schedule of. Uh, proposed, um, uh, activities and, uh, and we can continue to work on this.
Yes, from, well, let me make sure, anyone from the board first? I have to do it in order, Carol.
I'm sorry, but I, it's vast, boy, it, it's, I thought we were like talking about coordinating rec, but it was. I'm sorry, but I, it's vast, boy. It it's, I thought we were like talking about coordinating rec, but it was like. Heritage days, I mean, every activity in town, Veterans Day, every activity was like on there. That's a vast assignment. Much more vast than I thought, and it and we're saying it's part-time. I don't know. It seems like a blossom.
A lot. I think it's meant to incorporate all those things that we're relying on volunteers and can't always rely on volunteers. And we've been pulling other town staff away from their other responsibilities to handle these things. And so then they're not getting that work done. And so there's the mushroom effect. Greg.
Rec board hat on, Greg Lineback, here for Hannah and Hannah's bath, and actually just to uh, I guess. Uh, she said Eric might need some backing on this. Um, obviously.
It wasn't my idea, but I love it.
The uh, obviously from a rec board's perspective, and I'm sure from the library's perspective, this is a gotta-have thing. Now, to the average person in town, it probably falls into the category of a nice-to-have thing. And so with that, I will tell you that the recreation, folks, is one of the few revenue generating activities. In town, in terms of municipal services. And um, you know, we charge thirty-five, forty-five, fifty-five bucks per participant. And last year we had about four hundred and fifty kids participating in rec programs throughout the year. Uh, between soccer, basketball, and softball. So. With a little bit of steely-eyed CFO-type management, some of these costs, if we look forward. Uh, in terms of the fees we're charging, perhaps adding a couple of uh recreational events during the year that. You know, not only bring the community together, but also generate revenue. This could be, especially as a part-time position, a revenue-neutral thing.
Yep.
Don't go away. Um, so Eric, um, I know this goes to what Sean and Dave have been working on in terms of trying to find out how much. Volunteer time people are doing and getting burned out from doing. And um, this would include things like arranging for refs.
Absolutely.
And setting.
I just don't, I just want to make sure, though, we were not trying to help with people being burned out. I don't think there's a person that was feeling that way. I think this is really um an effort to support and. Grow what we already have and take and also not utilize as heavily on sort of Angelica and Teresa. For some of the signup duties that we're having and stuff like that too. So I just don't want anyone to get opinion that Rex is like, yeah, this is too much for us now as volunteers. Cause I, we definitely did not hear that when we met with any group.
Um, not at all.
Let's be correct. It was something I heard at one point, and you found that to not be the case.
I think those were probably our words, that it was a lot.
Yeah, it is. When we sat and listened, we were like, okay, that's.
And so the idea is that this isn't just for kids.
Correct.
It isn't just for adults. It's for everything. And it's for trying to bring more people together. I mean, people have suggested we could have yoga at the beach for adults. Well, that's great. If somebody's willing to find an instructor, put it, put out a program, make sure that they're there. Um, you know, notify people if it's a rainy day and they're not having it. There are all those little pieces that go together. And all of those sorts of things fall into this coordinator position, correct?
They do. And and um, I mean, there there is a a lot here, and that's and that's uh, that's okay. I think that this this is um the type of job description that you want. That would encompass all the possible things. But one of the key pieces with this, uh I put it up there near the top, was that the ability to to be flexible. Uh, the ability to prioritize, uh because, you know, there's a lot here. Some of this stuff is 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 real and tangible and happening right now. Some of it's aspirational, especially the summer uh youth programming, summer summer day camps and things like that. But um, I think that pretty easily this is a halftime position um with 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 it, which is what we had talked about. Um, and and maybe even a three-quarter time position if there was a lot of effort being put in. Um, but it's important to note that 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 if we don't have the money for that, then it's a halftime position. And that's, I think, the responsible thing for us, as I've said in the past, to start with. Um, you know, I'll be managing this person, this this position. Um, and I I say this to all the staff, there's always more work than you have time for. Our job is to to be smart about doing the things that are most important. In a way that brings most value um to the to the community. And so this position will be exactly that. If if there's stuff that needs to happen, um and there's not enough time to do it, then, well, maybe they ask somebody else to do it. Maybe that gets put on the volunteers. Um, and it's one last thing that that might get um, you know, uh, done. But I think it is important to note that um there's more here than I think we currently have. Um, there's certainly room to build into it. But the last thing I wanted to do was to have someone come up and say, well, you forgot this, you forgot that, you forgot that. Um, so we didn't do that. Uh, we put everything in. Um, knowing that we're gonna have to cut some of it out and be and be, you know, smart about it and be efficient. Uh, but I I I I think this is a good direction. I appreciate very much the work that Sean and Dave did to to reach out. Uh, because that feedback came back in and kind of went into this. Um, and uh the the next step really is to uh polish this up. Uh, and then, you know, we have our um rationale when we talk to the public and we talk to the budget committee. Well, we know it's at least this much, uh and we're starting off with with less time than we think we might need in the future. Uh, and it's gonna be, I think, a a a good place to to start the discussion. Uh, and then we'll have, you know, the vote in um in in June. But I I don't see too much else other than refining this. Um, and maybe developing some more of those program ideas. Uh, between now and and June, which is which is okay, because there's a lot of other stuff to take care of as well, so.
Can you discuss funding for this?
Yeah.
I know we have discussed, or I have discussed it with you, but if you could share that, please.
Yeah, so there's a couple things right now. Um, uh, the rec sports have in the past been close to revenue neutral. Um, they've been getting, um, I think, heading in the right direction by having a little bit of positive revenue. Basketball uh season this year. Um, they made uh about two thousand dollars. Um, and they want to use some of that for equipment, and they want to use some of that for um jerseys and things. But I think in the future, um, that sport and a lot of the others, um, we can have revenue coming in from those. Uh, to help fund a position like this. So I guess what I'll I'll just say in round terms is there's already a little bit of capacity there. To have fees help cover this, which is important because it we we right now have administrative costs that are being borne by myself. And and the front office um that just, they're not there. The the taxpayers are paying for those. And I think it's great that we have folks um that are paying for these sports that are also helping to pay for the administrative costs. So that's one piece. There's already potential there. There's already some revenue coming in. The next piece would be uh beach um activities and beach staff. Uh, we have currently uh and have over the past couple of years had one full-time beach superintendent and two part-time. Beach attendants. Uh, what we're doing is um, we've scaled back those beach attendant hours to be uh what I think is bare minimum. And the beach superintendent position has been rolled right into this uh community programming coordinator position. So there's at least six thousand dollars, if not a little bit more, from that position that's going into this position. Uh, so um, I think in net, uh, we're probably looking at uh for this fiscal year, I'd say coming up. Uh, maybe twelve thousand dollars unaccounted for. Um, and this this round number, I'll have, you know, more for the budget discussion. Uh, but um fairly modest for a halftime position right now. And part of the reason for that is that it is part-time. There are no uh health insurance. There's there's none of that. Uh, we have what we're obligated to pay for uh FICA and Medicare and things like that. And then the um, um, the one hour for every forty worked uh for. Uh, paid time uh off uh vacation time um that the state mandated, and also the new state mandate around at M L A. Um, so there are some things that are included, but uh really, uh it it's a, it's a very lean position. Uh, my my only concern is that we might not have quite enough to attract. And we talked about this at the last meeting, or maybe it was the budget committee. It was the budget committee um about, well, how are we gonna attract people? Um, so eighteen dollars an hour is the intended starting wage. That's pretty decent for a semi-skilled position. Um, and uh this one would be something that. Um, either a teacher uh might be interested in, instead of coaching in the offseason, they might help run these um programs. You know, eight to sixteen hours a week uh through their regular school year, and then maybe they jump in in the summertime. Uh, another demographic that might be a possibility would be um retirees, um folks that um that don't mind working forty hours. Uh, and then heading down to to Florida for a couple of weeks in the wintertime and coming back and and then picking up some of this work. So there's a few different demographics that we can look at for this. Um, but that is a consideration balancing the wages, balancing. Um, the benefits. Uh, but like I said, all told, um, we're looking at funding from a few different sources. And as Greg noted, uh, we really want to try to uh expand what we're offering, especially with summer programs for youth and adults. Uh, at the beach, um, at the fairgrounds, um, and and all of that. So, uh, does that answer your question or is that?
Yes.
Okay, good, yeah.
Uh, so I I know one thing that came out of our joint meeting with the budget committee was um. Having the select board support this position in terms of having a job description and justification for it. And some sort of a uh. Uh, framework of what the person would be doing, because they felt that was important for them to then consider the financial impact. Uh, so I guess I would be looking for a motion that the select board um. Not that we're approving this because Eric hasn't said it's finalized, but that we um are supportive of the direction this. Uh, write-up is taking.
I I would be willing to make that motion, I think, and primarily because I feel like, you know, we're putting, I think, one of our jobs. We have a lot of different ones, but one of them is to is to look carefully at ideas that we think might be of benefit to the community. And you put them out there for a public vote, you know, and if people think, oh, yeah, we agree with you, great. If they don't, that doesn't happen, right? I mean, it's going out for a vote. And so, you know, I would, I would make a motion that we would say that we support this concept. And support putting this out for a public vote.
Is that just fire?
Yep.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Dave?
No.
All those in favor? Five. There we go. It's unanimous. Okay, let's see if I can do better. We did one oh two and one oh three. Consider a first reading of the revised solid waste and recycling ordinance. Eric?
Sure, I'll try to be quick on this one as well. Um, so uh, we've needed to be working on this for for some time now. Um, this original version that that you were looking at uh was from two thousand eleven. Uh, and so actually, um. Uh, it was originally done in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, so Catherine and um uh Jaren actually gave us some some uh recommendations. Those are all fine. Uh, I didn't include those with this draft because I didn't want to start having multiple drafts. Um, I I'm happy to to bring those into this draft. Um, but the point I wanted to make was that, um, so we did have some textual issues because this was actually converted from a PDF. Uh, because no one could find the original Word document. Uh, and and so it was converted from PDF. So that's why, and I cleaned up everything I possibly could, but I missed a couple. But uh, in any event, um, this thing's that old. Um, that we need to be um uh modifying it um uh from a PDF. So uh, I think that um we have a few changes here. Uh, Karen Peterson. Uh, and I are continuing to work on this. Uh, one thing we'd like to do is perhaps move some of the definitions and some of the um. Um, the kind of more uh list-oriented pieces of this into um the operations manual. Uh, and have the ordinance just reference definitions and just reference um uh, you know, unacceptable, unacceptable waste. So that there's more um flexibility around that. Typically with ordinances, you want to set a a framework and not get into the 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 details. Um, you know, exception being with maybe the land use ordinance. But um with things that change as much uh and as quickly as the waste stream. Uh, has and probably will continue in the future, uh, we both felt that that might be a a good additional um revision to maybe. Uh, streamline some of that. It might also help prevent, if we wanted to add a definition because there was ambiguity. We could do it without having to have like one or M dash one dash two or whatever. Um, so I think that there's some some things there that we can work on. But otherwise, um, the changes that are in here um are um based based on essentially on experience over the past uh twelve years, fourteen years. Um, and um, understanding that um our past system has changed, our our waste types have changed. Um, our partnerships and how we structure our relationship uh with the towns of Fayette and Wayne have changed. Um, but a little bit of tweaks here and there to address some of those changes. But, you know, all in all, um, the overall structure seemed to be good. Um, the intent really is to allow the select board. To have a certain level of authority and discretion over how this stuff's managed, but also um appropriately delegates that. To the transfer station manager and the and the town manager to uh execute a lot of the 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 details of this. Um, and I think that that we have a a pretty good start at the revisions. Like I said, I would like to um, uh, perhaps um. Take out some of those list-based things uh to make this a smaller document and and put that um, those specifics in a different. In in the operations manual, also referencing the operations manual as Catherine uh had suggested is a is a is. But, you know, absolutely necessary, uh, because it establishes that that A, we have one of those. Uh, and B, that that we um, we use it as a tool to manage operations at the facility. State law requires it, but it's really important for us to note it here. Uh, so that the public and the and the board are aware that um that that document exists and it has what its purpose is. So um, I think this is a a good first reading. I appreciate the comments I've received so far, uh, and I'm happy to uh take any others.
I'll summarize in thirty seconds or less. So there were some typo kinds of things on. And then I suggested that we add a definition of town and town manager so that it's um. Clear that we're not talking about the Fayette or Wayne Town Manager because they are involved, but they're not named. Uh, so we have participating town. So anyway, I think those would be two definitions you would leave in here. Um, and also referencing the operations manual on. And that there's, there are, I think it was also the policies. So there's an operations manual that is for employees, and then there are policies that are for the general public, and they're listed on the website. And I think it should be referenced in the ordinance that there are policies for the public and an operations manual for the employees. So that that never gets forgotten.
Yeah, absolutely.
Suggestions that, Jaren, thank you for your input on that.
I just on.
You have to go up to the mic.
Do you need a charger, Carol?
So just when it comes to defining town and town manager, rather than putting them definitions the first time the full term is used. Say hereby referred to as town or something like that would make it much clearer and keep those out of the definitions category.
Like it, thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
So are we okay with asking Eric to bring us back a second copy next meeting?
Can I just ask a question? Um, when it comes, when it comes, when it comes to the universal waste piece and how those of now. I I I just want to make sure those aren't reclassified since that's changed in terms of how they're dealt with. You know, like the batteries and the. Uh, smoke detectors and such. So I just want to make sure that, cause they're housed separately. And so if we're changing that and the fee structure as well, because they're being accepted differently, if that's reflected.
Yeah, so so um. It's part of policy, but also i- it is referenced in the ordinance, but that's one reason why I want to take and say. Universal waste is something that we handle at the facility under certain conditions. See the operations manual for the specifics. Because then, when things do change with respect to lithium ion batteries or whatever it might be, that we can a- uh, address that. Without having to go back and update the ordinance. So you you're absolutely right to bring that up, Sean, and I'll say that the way it is right now, it works. Um, but I'm hoping to make it even better, so.
And the one thing the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee wanted was the physical adhering of the decal to the windshield. Because that's something the transfer station employees take a lot of language over. People not wanting to put them on their windshield. And it's simple. You put it on and you don't come. And you gotta have it on to go to the beach. It's not gonna sit on your dashboard, because then you pass it around to other people. And that's not the kind of facility we are.
If you really want to do it, you can have your brother-in-law borrow your truck with the sticker on it, and then you're good.
Right.
It's just, there's, there's, it's, it's kind of foolish, um, the amount of effort that we have to go through sometimes to um stop people from from cheating. But again, it's, you know, you know, I pay taxes here, we all do. Um, we just don't want to pay for other people's trash. Um, and I hear stories all the time about people saying, well, I I don't go to the retail transfer station anymore. I go to, you know, um, uh. Two towns over, I go to Jay because it's cheaper. Well, good for you. You know, their taxpayers are paying for your trash. We don't want to be the town that takes trash from other towns because because we're easy.
Right. We're making money on your trash.
I mean, or putting a decal on your window, I mean, it's anyway.
So there is a reason why some people may not want to, that is, I think, perfectly okay. If you use your personal vehicle for work and you work in a setting where you're working with individuals with different barriers, then you might not want them to know that you live in a certain town.
You may not, I mean, I guess the the
I think that that's something that's really important to be mindful of.
I think it is. I I guess the the question I have though is if if someone would have to see you in your vehicle to know that that was your vehicle with your Reedfield sticker on it.
A hundred percent I can tell you there are people that work out there in troubling situations that may even transport in their personal vehicle to someone that they might never want to know where they live.
I think there can always be exceptions to any rule. And in a situation like that, I think you just ask the town manager or the transfer station manager.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm saying, I just hate putting blankets out there.
If that's if that's an issue, put some kind of provision in there or leave it open-ended that there there are, yeah.
Yeah.
Rare exceptions.
I wouldn't want to set the bar too low because, you know, we've already had people calling and saying, well, you know, I don't want to put it on my car, you know?
I'm sure, I understand, I'm just saying.
Good to bring it up.
I have a quick question, kind of tangent to this, but people are really excited to get their passes with the beach pass this weekend. Someone had a question, if they are walkers to the beach, do they take an ID that shows they're a Reedfield resident? I didn't know.
That would be a good idea.
What did they do? Well, what did they do in the past?
In the past, they've just said, who are you, where you're from, what are you doing here?
Okay.
And and it's not a, it's for the beach is not a high bar, right?
Exactly.
Transfer station's a little bit different, but I think that, yeah, they'll they'll handle that the way they always have, which is a little bit of due diligence, a little bit of straight face testing. And then otherwise, if it's four high school kids walking with flip-flops, then you know they didn't come far and whatever.
Thank you, good answer.
All right, moving on to twenty-four dash one zero five, consider a first reading of the revised marijuana establishments ordinance. Can we make this one minute?
If I I think I can do that, if if you approve the fee schedule from the transfer station.
That's the next item after this. Oh, that's weird, sorry.
Oh, jeez, I thought those were together.
You didn't do that.
All right, so there's one change. We want to limit the number of dispensaries for record for caregiver dispensaries to two. That was one of the biggest concerns people had in our comprehensive plan survey. They didn't want to see us become Manchester with the Green Mile. They thought two was plenty. This change would limit us to two.
Which is what we currently have.
So I I'm just curious if the wording is correct, though, for the caregiver retails, I I don't know.
That's what's referenced in state statute.
Okay, so that's the same as whether it's recreational or pharmaceutical.
As long as it's, as long as you have a medical card, so it's the medical provider.
So what would stop a recreational?
It's not been voted to be approved at town meeting.
So we can't have recreational?
Unless unless someone brings it up and says we want to add recreational.
We voted on seven things and five or six of them passed.
Yes, we put we put a whole cafeteria out there. The things that didn't pass were recreational and adult use of any kind, but everything else did.
Not that there.
None of it that different.
Well, it seems to be the popular thing everyone does in their car now, but we probably shouldn't go there. So can we approve this change for Eric, since that's the only change, and so he doesn't have to bring it back to us?
Unless you guys are opposed to it, which is fine, too.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated marijuana establishments ordinance.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. There we go, that one is done. Excellent, now we'll go to the transfer station fee schedule. My only concern on that, trying to keep it short, is that we don't have the old prices, so I didn't know what the new prices are.
Sure, so the the there are things that used to be, anything in yellow has been changed. One pound propane used to be a dollar or two, now it's free. So hopefully you don't, that's that's cool, I hope. We're chargeable alkaline batteries, those were accepted as as waste, but we wanted to specifically note that they were free and that we can accept them. Because now we did, we do have free lithium ion. So we want to be very clear that all batteries can be accepted and will be recycled.
So that's a shift because practice was they go in the trash.
They still can, but we can also accept them as a separate waste stream and 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 transfer them through, so.
Do they then just get thrown away?
No, they would get mailed back to, it it's similar to the light bulb program. We might have a small fee associated with it, but we thought for the for the effort and the amount of money that we'd be dealing with, that just making it free would be a non-issue. The light ballasts, this one actually, we never had it on the schedule. We were still charging anyway because we have to pay to have them removed. So this just codifies current practice, so a dollar for that, for out of the case, two dollars for something that we have to take a screwdriver to and remove. So that's
Three dollars?
Three.
Three, sorry.
Two more dollars.
Two more dollars, yeah. So that just codifies current practice. The next item in yellow is household hazardous waste. That previously just said hazardous waste. We wanted to make sure that people knew there was a distinction between commercial and household hazardous waste. And then the other item is the helium gas tanks. Those were five and those are down to three.
I'll make a motion to approve the new transfer station fee schedules.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Well, now that was speedy, that was unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving on to the last item, twenty-four dash one zero seven, discussion of the comprehensive plan goals. Eric, can you share your screen?
Yeah, let me let me back out of, I'm not going to share the packet because that is
Okay, so I'll explain what I did with this. So there is no change to, I have to make mine turn around.
I gotta zoom, I gotta join Zoom too here, just a second.
This is the same thing, though, right?
It's exactly the same thing that we had the last time we looked at it. Yep, this was, this was, this spreadsheet was presented in November, maybe. Yep, and that's what Eric printed out for us, but that, yeah. So anyway, it listed all the different people that are involved in terms of committees or employees with each one of the goals that was laid out in the comp plan for the Select Board. And we had, I had highlighted them at that time, different colors for short-term, midterm, long-term, and ongoing. And then we said we were going to review this quarterly. And we talked about that and how we would do it, and it was really overwhelming because there were a couple hundred of them, and how are we ever going to keep track of it? So in discussing it with Eric and Sean, we came up with the idea about just handling the ones that are Select Board with Town Manager. That any of the others would be taken up by those individual committees. And we had said that each committee, including the Select Board, would pick goals that were, they thought were the most relevant and timely for what they're working on now, and let us know what those were. So we would let people take care of those, Rec Board, Fire Department, CEO, et cetera. So then I went through and what you're seeing, if Eric gets down farther to where the pink starts, so it's like twelve pages.
I'll zoom into that, so it's just
Oh, there it is, we've got some now, you have to go backwards.
No, I'm still going.
No, there's pink in there.
It's forty-one.
Forty-one, so this is where it starts, but
Kill me, Catherine, I I don't always admit this in public, but I am partly colorblind and I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay, so if you look on the screen, so if you look on the TV monitor, Eric's going to bring it up. So can you, can you see the peachy? No, look, look there.
Okay.
So Eric slide up a little.
One of those is peach, and then there's some other ones.
If you can slide up, Eric, there you go.
It's it's slightly delayed, so. So I'll tell you what, I will highlight a cell, and then you, this is the color you want to pay attention to. It's these, the the stuff that's in this cell, you see that color?
Well, I see you just highlighted that, yeah.
All right.
Now we can relay more, but it is highlighted.
Okay.
So that's the color we want to pay
Okay, so if you can slide up just a little bit so we can get to one that isn't that color, then it will be more obvious to Steve, I think, whatever color it is he's seeing.
Which is undetermined.
And that's okay.
I can tell it's different from some other ones on there.
I made a colorblind child, so I get it.
It's cool.
So where my mouse is, is white.
Right, but can you make it so it goes up more?
To where?
I want it, no, the wrong way.
So that
I want to see the next line down. Stop, stop right there. Okay, so things, things that are shaded and whatever that is.
Okay.
Those are ones that are just Select Board with Town Manager.
I got you.
Yeah. Your laptop's purple, can you not see the purple?
Yeah, sure, they might be kind of purply, okay. This is supposed to be really simple, so. So if you, if you look at it on your laptop and you just see that it's shaded, you'll see that I added a column that says, now I can't even see it. Because I made it too big. It says, date and reference. And so on the first one, I just put, okay, we did this, this was like a suggestion, I think, from Dave. The last meeting, we discussed this, December twenty twenty-three, Christmas Through the Ages Tour, Town Manager, Library Messenger. So that is a comment that we were working on that particular goal, and that's when it was. And that should be enough for somebody to say, hey, they actually paid attention to what was in the comp plan. So if someone ever says to us, hey, do you guys ever look at the comp plan? Well, yeah, and we we did this, do you remember this thing? Oh, yeah, so that was sort of a historical thing you did and and so on. And I just went down, it took me about twenty minutes after they were all highlighted to go down and just thinking about things that we've discussed. And I just put things in there, FY twenty twenty-five CIP, FY twenty twenty-four, complete li- library renovation. And that category was identify any capital improvements needed to maintain or upgrade public services. And so my suggestion is that we just slide down through this every so often, and maybe it doesn't need to be quarterly. Because we, how many did I say we had done, Eric?
At least we had worked on twenty-seven out of the
Out of like ninety-something.
Yeah.
And so twenty-seven out of ninety of them, we have already had some concrete action take place. Which shows, I think, that these were good goals for the Select Board. And they might be the only ones, a lot of the other ones are not extremely relevant to anything we've been discussing. And some of them are pretty esoteric, they're things like governmental on a state level or on a regional level, like to support regional housing efforts in Reedfield. Well, there aren't any, so we can't support them.
So saying that twenty-seven of them we've had action on ultimately means we've actually addressed it.
Exactly.
Meaning even if nothing's been done, we just said, yep, looked at that. So just so people are clear.
No, there, these are things that have actually had action on them.
Okay.
So like we revised assistance protocols at the transfer station, so continued working towards making properties ADA accessible. And so we changed a policy there where Eric changed the operations policy so employees could help people take stuff out of their car.
Think we've actually had action on it.
Yes, which to me was remarkable. And so I think if we did this on an ongoing basis, as we get committee meeting minutes in, we could add things that aren't in our shaded areas as other people complete things. And if we do ours once or twice a year, I think we would be fine. Is because we're doing it.
And I apologize, I looked at this and went, I did not know what to do with it. Which is why I was like, can we print that, because I can't even, and so I didn't go deep into it, and I guess I'm glad I didn't. So, okay, thank you.
Yep.
I just was overwhelmed with the the whole thing.
Yeah, so anyway. So it really needs to be looked at on a computer, it really doesn't work on paper because it's too wide. So if that's all right with you folks, Eric and Sean and I will address this at least again before we have elections. So in case anybody isn't still on the board, we would have the input of those people. I'm just at work for everybody.
Sharing.
Yes. Yeah. Is that okay?
That's great.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, so that completes everything on our agenda, and we have other business upcoming meetings and future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they would like put on an agenda coming forward? Okay, I'm not hearing anything, so I just want to remind us that we are meeting, let me find my note here.
On the eleventh?
We are meeting the eleventh, twentieth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-seventh of March. So the eleventh and the twenty-fifth are Select Board meetings. The twentieth is the joint meeting with the Budget Committee. This is the meeting where the public, so we would sit like we did at the CIP meeting, so we'd have this Select Board on one side and the Budget Committee on the other, and the public can come and say, hey, I don't like what you're doing in the warrant articles, we think you should change the amount. And the amount could still be changed then because we haven't put the warrant together. So that's that meeting. And then the twenty-seventh is the meeting, if you can make it, at Merenica Community School. We will, with the school board, we will get to sit through the audit presentation, which is not very interesting, but it is kind of interesting because it's pertinent. You know, you're hearing from the auditors that the school's doing the right things or that they didn't do something right. So it is kind of useful. And so we do get a seat at the table for that, at least we did last time, right? Yeah, we weren't just sitting off in the corner. So at least we need everybody to be here on the eleventh, the twentieth, and the twenty-fifth. The twenty-seventh, if you can make it. And with that, can we have a motion to adjourn three minutes early?
Did we need to sign those?
Oh, we never did the warrants, never mind.
Can I make a suggestion? I think that we're we're, you you definitely want to do the the ones from last time, but before you, I'm almost certain that you had said you want to do them the night of the meeting. I do think it's better to wait and do it
The week after.
Yeah.
I wanted it here so people could sign it the night of the meeting.
Yes, yes.
But we shouldn't be
Okay, so I'll do this in three minutes if I can. So warrant thirty-five and thirty-six, which we all signed, was for ninety-five thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. And Sean will make a motion in a minute on that. The things of interest in this was really not a whole lot. A lot of CMP, Secretary of State, we did pay Goral Palmer nine thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars for sidewalk engineering. We paid two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars for Dave Morrow for work at the library for electric, electric work. We paid dues to Main Municipal. We paid mainland development consultants, that was for the fairgrounds, correct, Eric? That was three thousand three hundred and seventy-five. We ordered another load of salt. Because even though we haven't had a lot of snow this year, they have salted quite a bit, that was four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. We paid another fifteen, one thousand five seventy-five to North Star Planning and two thousand nine hundred and nineteen to RS Leonard Landscape Architects, that was all for the fairgrounds. We paid United Hydraulics for some repairs at the transfer station, that was seventeen hundred and sixty-one dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants thirty-five and thirty-six to the sum of ninety-five thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, it is unanimous, and now a motion to adjourn on time.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Steve, unanimous. We are adjourned, and if you would please sign the warrant.